Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is 9:00 AM. We are at the Grimes County Annex Building at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. This meeting has been called to order at 9:00 AM. I'd ask if you would, please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flags. Shall we pray? Father, we're grateful for another day. We pray to God that we do your will as we do our work. Father, let us use wisdom in the decisions that we make. Let us be fair. Let us be honest. And let us be considerate of all of those that these decisions do indeed make. Father, we ask that you give us strength through this day. Be with this county. Be with this state. Be with this nation as we continue to fight this COVID pandemic. Be with those that have lost loved ones. Father, comfort them. Give them peace. Father, give all of us peace as we work through this trying time. We know you have a plan there, God. We don't always know the details of that plan, but if we leave things in your hand, we know your will is done and will be done. Thank you for the love of Jesus, and it's his name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? Bathurst County Clerk, I don't have any submissions for public comments.
No, sir.
Commissioners, any comments that you or announcements that you care to make? Hearing none, we will go then to Agenda Items number three, four, and five, Consent Agenda Items, number three. Consider and take action to approve the treasures listed claims and bills. Item four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. Just how do you have just how much longer are we going to get 2020 budget items going through and with adjustments being made?
On the budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we should be clearing those up here shortly, so probably for the next month or so as we're working through it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there are no questions, then I'd like to make the motion. We approve the consent agenda items three, four, and five.
There's a motion for the court on consent agenda items number three, four, and five by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll now go to agenda item number six. Consider and recognize the following employees for their years of service. I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner Dobianski. Jay LaFerney. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Judge. My pleasure this morning. Mr. LaFerney with his five-year, ten-year award. Congratulations. I want to thank the court for the continued help for veterans. We appreciate it, and we couldn't do it without you guys. Thank you.
Jay, we've had good comments about the service that you're providing our veterans in the counseling, so we thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Robbie Carroll, five years. Brother Rich.
All right, Mr. Carroll.
Seems like just yesterday, didn't it, Robbie?
He was back with.
Congratulations.
All right, Cory.
Morning.
She's been with us for 15 years now.
Indeed.
What a blessing.
Thank you, sir.
You get the plaque in one pajama day.
Add a bonus.
There's a story that goes with that.
Is that one per month or per year?
One.
Just one? Okay, I'll take it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cory. Mr. Colts, you should have probably come up and been in that photo.
Oh, I think that was great.
It's great that we can recognize the longevity of our employees. That's great. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
We will now go to agenda item number seven. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife County Extension Agent, Alan Holman. He's going to give us his interpretation event. Is Alan out there?
Yes. Alan?
He might be herding cattle or penning chickens or...
Alan.
Alan.
No, Alan. Come on in, Alan.
You're here. Are you okay?
Alan and Kyle.
Some of this is from mail. We just now checked the mail. We don't usually check the mail very much. So we are Ag Extension. We're here to do our first interpretation event of 2021. This is also going to be our end of the year 2020 recap on everything we did in 2020 since we did not get to meet with y'all in the end of December for lunch with the agents. In the folder is all of our in-depth and outreach summaries from everything we did in 2021 as a staff. The first page is an executive summary. It's a two-page, one-page front and back of everything we did in a snapshot. I'm going to talk a little bit about agriculture, and then Kyla's going to talk FCH and 4H, and then we'll talk some 4H livestock, and that'll be it for today. Ms. Carla is not here. She's in quarantine right now, so she's working from home. Her stuff is on the back. We're going to let her talk about it at the next interpretation event.
All right.
Sounds fair. So for ag production in 2020, we didn't get to do a whole lot, but at the beginning of the year, we had a five-hour CBU conference, which was very well-attended. We had 62 participants. We had over seven or eight vendors, if I remember right, and it was just a very well-attended conference. It was our highest attending conference that we've had since I've been here, so that was great. We also had farm and ranch visits. We went on 15 different ones to assist 22 producers in the county, which represented over 500 acres in the county. So that was a good statistic to grab that and see the acreage that we're impacting. We also had some private applicator trains. We had 16 attend. Those numbers are down, obviously, because we only had two classes. So numbers are down from that. We did get to have our South Central Texas Cow Calf Clinic and Third Annual Youth Track Clinic in October. The youth track was the highest attended that we've had in the three years that we've had it. We awarded 10 seniors $2,500 scholarships with that program, so that was very well that we got to do that. We had over 252 producers, youth, volunteers, and vendors representing 10-plus counties throughout that program. Let's see, we also, with the pandemic going on, Extension has put us on these initiative teams. So I'm on a beef and forage initiative team, and through that program, we did... Do I have it on there? I should have it on there. Yes, A&amp;R Beef and Forage Initiative Team. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, Southeast Region developed a beef and forage initiative team to respond to programming needs via online methods. So everything we did through that was online. We had two programs throughout the summer. We talked about how the... Uh, what is it? The cell barns. How the cattle cell barns are adjusting to the pandemic and allowing the cells to continue. We had topics on fever ticks. We had topics on wildlife management, how you incorporate wildlife management into the cattle operation. So just a bunch of different stuff we had on that, and those programs all were online that we did throughout the summer. That's essentially all we did on the ag side, other than a bunch of emails. We talked, we put out newsletters. Within the newsletters, we put how to apply for the relief that, what was it, Farm Service Agency was kind of overseeing. I helped the judge with that. I hope I helped you correctly on that. It was a learning process for everybody, so we helped with that. We did some PPE distribution. There was one month where Kyla was here by herself doing the interpretation event because I was delivering face masks all over Southeast Texas. We did that for a while. Other than that, we pretty much just tried to keep our presence while online and not do very many face-to-face events. So we'll let Kyla talk on the FCH and 4H.
Well, Kyla, before Alan leaves, have you got a solution to our feral hog problem?
Keep shooting them. We did not get the grant. We did not have enough data currently to... That grant was, the money was distributed to basically a trickle-down effect on who had the most data. What we can do for the next round is we can shoot hogs and turn in hog tails. And if we turn in hog tails and say, well, throughout this two months, we've got 57 hog tails, that's data that's showing that we have a hog problem. The way I look at it, though, I know, the way I look at it is let's ask the farmers and ranchers how much acreage is being damaged by a hog tail. So if we can say that there's 325,000 acres in Grimes County and 250,000 acres are being damaged by hogs, that right there is going to tell us that we have a hog problem. So that's how that grant was. We just didn't have the data to...
That was the grant that Commissioner Cox sponsored?
Yes. So for this round, we did not get it, but then to the solution, keep shooting them. If you can find ammo, keep shooting them.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Kyla. I'm going to start cutting up roadkill when I see it.
So in 2020, that kind of turned into a prepare and plan year for family community health programs due to COVID and lack of us being able to go out and do face-to-face and interact with people in person. So that turned into planning for 2021 for me. I do have programs this year that will focus on blood pressure and diabetes. So I have some cooking workshops, blood pressure workshops, and cooking with diabetes. And then I also have some that will target weight loss and weight management through Walk Across Texas, and a maintain no gain program. So those educational programs are going to be put into play this year in 2021, and I'm looking forward to them. I think they're really going to benefit Grimes County and really help us out here.
Are you answering your writing, we're overweight?
No.
Okay. Just asking a question.
I'm not, but they're programs that target our county, so that's what I look at. Health data throughout the county, and these are the best programs that will help us out. I also did put together a family and community health and 4H, FCH project committees in 2020. So I do have seven members now on my family and community health program area committee, and we did, we were able to meet twice at the end of this year and back in December, November and December. They are the ones that are going to help me put on these programs that we talked about in 2021. We do have a meeting this week, so we're going to kind of target Walk Across Texas because that'll be our first program that will start up February 14th and go through April 10th. It's an eight-week program. And then I do have a 4H, FCH project. So this is all of our 4H projects that are related to food and nutrition, fashion and interior design, consumer education, everything that's non-livestock-based involved in 4H. So it's a group of four parents that they get together, and they're really involved, and their kids are very involved in these FCH, 4H projects, and so they're helping me work together, work with them, and put on some workshops, give me some insight on what the kids have told them that they wanted when it comes to putting on these workshops and hopefully get them some better education and practice materials for contests in the 4H. And then as we jump to 4H, so at the top is kind of a small graph that we put together that recaps everything that was happening in 2020 under the 4H program. So our enrollment numbers for 2019, 2020 were 209 members. We had 168 youth, 41 volunteers, and eight clubs. We did do some COVID-19 projects, so we had a COVID-19 4H food drive where we had 17 4H members adulting youth club with this, and we were able to donate 329 meals to the discounter here in Anderson. And then we did some Facebook Live 4H COVID-19 updates to reach everybody virtually and give them some updates with everything that was going on, all the news that was changing, and kind of keep them in tune with what's going on in our office. Fundraising and awards, so the Grimes County Pecan fundraiser, that's our big fundraiser for the 4H program, they were able to raise a little over $6,000 to go to the 4H program. We had a book fund award that awarded three graduating seniors scholarships, and it was totaled to about $2,500. And then our 4H Star Awards, we did have 13 youth this year receive 4H Star Awards. That's kind of our top 4Hers, our gold stars, silver stars, bronze stars. They really do a lot and show for it. They have to go through a whole application and interview process to receive these awards, so we were really proud that we were able to give 13 of those this year. And then if you jump down to the big one, that's kind of our county, district, and state participation across the board. So at our county roundup, we had 31 kids participate in February before everything hit the following month, which was double what we had in the previous year. We had 21 record books submitted this year, which is a really good number to have. Our awards banquet was limited due to COVID-19. We had 67 kids that we were going to award certificates to, but we had a small drive-by award ceremony that could pick up a certificate and their 4H hat instead, and we did a small ceremony for the ones that received those Star Awards to hand out their plaques and their awards and everything. District, we had some junior leader lab, archery roundup, record books, and council meetings. And then state participation, that was very lacking due to COVID-19, so we didn't have quite as many participants there. So throughout the 4H year, through our county council, our 4H financial task force, club meetings, all those programs, we had about 78 meetings, which was a really good number for this year and everything not being able to happen face-to-face, so we're really proud of that and hoping that goes up. So I'll take it back to you for 4H livestock.
But you're the 4H coordinator.
Can you handle 4H livestock?
I'm telling you, she's the 4H coordinator. Just because I talk livestock and she talks the other side doesn't mean we both don't go off of each other. I'm doing whatever she's doing with the gross land, and she's doing all the livestock with me. She knows more about lambs than anybody in here probably. Don't let her fool you. She's the lamb person. All right, so on the livestock side, before March 11th, we all know March 11th, when they shut Houston down, everything else kind of shut down. We had 150 youth that did participate in the county level and at major stock show levels. So that's great considering we had 160-something kids in 4H program at the time. Most of them are all doing livestock. That should tell you we're livestock-driven county. We have a livestock coalition committee that we formed that meets, and they discuss validations. They discuss the procedures on how we're going to validate with everything going on with the pandemic, how we would do about that safely. They also decide what projects to do for the livestock side. We decided to do a livestock journey team that we got up and off the ground, their hands-on on developing that program. Let's see, they, we did livestock project visits, which was where me and Kyla both would go out and we'd help the kids and say, hey, you know, they'd ask us, what should we be feeding this lamb right now? We'd give them suggestions on how to feed them. We'd give them suggestions on setting them up. We even helped kids that didn't, had never showed before, if they wanted to show a goat for the first time, we'd go help them select their goats, find the breeders, and that sort of stuff. One of the big things we did back in December of 2019 was the Southern Classic Livestock Experience. We had over 250 participants from nine-plus counties in that one. That is a big kind of first-time showers come to that, and they have, they go through a two-day deal where it's all education the first day, species-specific on what they're showing. So if you're showing a hog for the first time, you go to the hog section, and you learn what to put in your show box, how to do showmanship, that sort of stuff. And then the second day, if you have an animal at the time that you would have on feed, you can bring it the second day, and you can actually simulate through a show. So you get to see how to show the animal, and the animal actually gets its experience as well. It's good for the animals to get that exposure as well with the banging of the gates and the people hollering, the parents hollering and everything. It's good for the animals. It helps them with their stress. At the county fair in June, we had 197 participants, and there was over $480,000 awarded through the premium sale and the freezer sale to those livestock participants. And that was, I think, one of our highest ever that we've had. So that was very good considering the pandemic and everything else that was going on. Another big thing was back to the initiative teams that we were doing through all this pandemic. I was on an ag and livestock 4H initiative team, which is where we essentially did education on livestock projects online. Now, I'm not a Facebook person. I'm not an online person. I can barely keep up with my emails. But everybody says this is really good, that we had over 109,000 views, over 4,000 engagements, and over 1,000 shares. Whatever all that means, to me, that means they were busy looking at it online. So that's good that they were seeing that stuff. That kind of wraps up the livestock side of things. So going forward, we have been given permission by our administration on the A&amp;M side that as long as the county is open for business, we are allowed to be open for business through preparedness plans that we submit to A&amp;M. So what we're going to start doing for 2021 now is we're going to send in preparedness plans, example 4H meetings. To have a 4H meeting in person, we have to send in a preparedness plan and say that there's going to be X number of people at it. We're going to have it outside, we're going to have it inside, we're going to space carry the park, whatever the case may be. For everything we do, we're going to start sending in preparedness plans, which is going to allow us to start meeting with our kids again, which we really need because we've lost our visibility throughout the last 10 months. For the upcoming CBU program on the 28th, as long as the county is open, we're going to have that, but a preparedness plan will be in place. On any of these preparedness plans, we can be shut down by A&amp;M even if the county's open, so we have to be ready for that. The other side of what I wanted to say was in that folder, we didn't touch on our in-depth and outreach summaries, but what those are is our plans that we did in 2020. Those same plans will be in place for 2021 with the hope of adding more plans and more hundreds and more impacts across the board. That's kind of where we're at. We don't really know where we're going, but with Kyla leading the way, we're good to go. We're going to try to do better by checking the mail, too.
Mr. Holman, do you have an extra handout?
Uh, yes, this I do on the executive side.
Just like to put it with the minutes?
I don't think Kyla wrote on that one. I usually write on mine because I don't know.
Before y'all leave, as Commissioners, do you have any questions for Alan or Kyla?
I have a comment. I just really appreciate what y'all do. I know it's been very difficult on you the past few months with this COVID, but just thank y'all for getting in there and doing what you can. We're going to try to do a little bit. Kyla keeps us busy.
I have a comment also. We certainly do appreciate what you all are doing, and I'm glad to see that you're going to try to get the kids back together because they definitely need that. They definitely need to...
They've asked for it, so we're trying to get it as best we can.
Camaraderie and getting back together.
Yeah. 4H is a learn-by-doing, so we have to have those kids out doing stuff with them. We can't do it behind a computer screen.
Yes.
All right, we thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
With that, we'll now go to agenda item number eight. And Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Mr. Johnny McNally. Good morning, Johnny.
Good morning. If you don't mind, I'll take the mask off.
That's fine.
It's interesting following that group because it's such a similar theme to what I'm about to present. I did want to preface the discussion just to give you a little, before you get you in the right frame of mind, the man and the son, the son comes up to the father and says, hey, Dad, what's an acorn? And the father says, well, it's basically an oak tree in a nutshell.
Bring the lamb people back.
I will tell you, it was an unusual year for the Chamber of Commerce as well. We had to shift gears about the same time those folks did, to be COVID-related respondees, I guess. We first started out working with Congressman Brady as he was asking for input as to how CARES Act would be structured and what kind of benefits, what could we do to benefit our small businesses here in our areas? And that was very productive. CARES Act came out of that, and we had lots of discussions with our local reps, with our members, get feedback from them, with the SBDC, with the SBA, just a lot of people involved with that planning process. Once it rolled out, we offered assistance to our members and to others in the community as far as applying for PPP and idle loans. After that was done, we also worked with them to ensure that their PPP loans could be forgiven, so we gave them guidance on that, working with the SBDC and the SBA. At the same time, we were focused on shop local promotions. We worked with the city of Navasota and the Navasota Examiner and the radio station to produce lots of information on shop local, to make people aware that all these businesses that had been supporting your organizations for all these years through donations, now they are asking for you to step up and return the favor and keep it local, and that was a good campaign. It continues, of course, to this day, but we have radio ads, we have newspaper ads. We're doing a lot online and through websites. We also did a series of informational webinars that our members could showcase their businesses and let people know, hey, we're open, here's what we're doing, and here's how we're keeping you safe. And we also approached the Chamber of Commerce. We have limited personnel. We have limited funding, but we did want to do something big, and we approached the city about doing a July 4th celebration, which the city has more resources to make that happen. And so out of that came the July fireworks celebration that the city of Navasota put on. We assisted them by lining up sponsors for the event and publicizing. And then we turned our focus to the holiday season, which we knew was coming up soon, and starting to build a home for the holidays website and let people know the Black Friday sales that were happening in the area. That turned into a whole website where it listed all the events that were coming up, where you could eat, where you could sleep, where you could shop, trying to draw in more tourism. The local businesses picked up that, and in Navasota at least, they held a Sip and Shop, which was very helpful for them. They had a lot of shoppers. Definitely, we had fewer events in 2020, and there were some closures. Y'all are probably aware of some of the business closures that have come about as a result of the epidemic. There were many people affected. There were layoffs in the industrial park over the period, and that's been challenged. But I think that having the CARES Act in place and the way that they approached unemployment and the benefits that they paid up through unemployment kind of mitigated this. It's still a serious thing, but at least it took some relief. It gave a little relief to those people who had to file unemployment. There were some positives during the last several months. I'm sure y'all are probably aware, but The Burger King is a new business that opened recently. We have the Car Wash that's just opened. Mid-South introduced the Mid-South Fiber, and they've gotten that running in several areas. That's provided high-speed internet to some rural areas in our county. Railroad Street is under construction still, but it's due to be completed just before the birthday bash. And we have three, at least three new businesses looking to open on Railroad Street, possibly four, possibly four new businesses. So those things are some positives. When we're looking to 2021 and Chamber of Commerce, what can we do? We are working to hold live events in a safe manner, similar to what the 4H was just describing. It's really beneficial if we can do live events. I heard numbers this morning that were sort of sobering, so we have to be careful on how we do these things. But a good example, the State of the City meeting that we had last week was a live and virtual meeting, and we had great information that was shared on a regional level, on the county level, through the school district, and through the city of Navasota. And there was so much positive information that came through in that session. And if anyone's interested in seeing the State of the City, we did record it, and if you go to the Chamber of Commerce, you'll find the entire video and audio.
On your website?
On our website, yes. February, normally we have an awards banquet. This year, we're going to have to split the awards banquet, so we'll have a membership meeting that will be virtual, and that's where the Chamber of Commerce will just give an update to our members virtually. But as far as the awards banquet portion, we're postponing that. We're looking at the end of April to host that live, and that's our plan. We also plan to do a live member awareness event in March. We are planning on doing a wine walk in April, and we're planning on doing our awards banquet in April. What else can we do in 2021? Time will tell. All we can do is kind of roll with it and see where things go. Time will tell, all we can do is kind of roll with it and see where things go. We just don't want to be a source for infection, but we do want to make things happen for our community. New businesses that are on the horizon, there have been some housing developments that are being proposed. On Railroad Street, as I mentioned, there are three plus businesses looking to open soon. Chicken Express, they announced that Chicken Express will be coming to Navasota by the end of the year, it should be open. And where the Chicken Express, it'll be next to Stripes, and there are other developable pads at that same location. So we're, I expect we'll see a little bit of a growth spurt right in that area over the next two years. There's some solar projects proposed for Grimes County, I'm sure y'all are aware of at least one of them, and there are more that are interested.
Yeah, one.
Of a similar size and similar nature. The Central East Texas Alliance, of which y'all are a member, and I am president of that organization, it's a regional economic development effort, that is alive and well. We have membership that stretches from Marlin through Hearn. So members are Marlin, Hearn, Bryan College Station, Grimes County, City of Plantersville, City of Navasota, City of Anderson, Tom Ball, and Magnolia. So we have membership that stretches that entire one. And we've already started doing more advertising for that region, to try to bring more business throughout this region. And we're, I think, well positioned to do some things this year, so that's the plan. We continue to get leads from the governor's office, RFIs are what they're called, and when we can respond to the RFIs, I say "we," I mean "me," I do respond to any of the interested businesses if we fit their criteria. And so I continue to monitor that and respond to the ones that I can. We are trying to work with Representative Lamont's office right now to have an Austin visit, as this legislative session is about to kick off. And discussion, even as recently as yesterday, we're discussing, how can we do it? Can we go to Austin, doesn't have to be here in the district? So we're trying to kick some things around, and I'll keep y'all apprised as we start to nail that down. And the Chamber of, I just wanted to say, the Chamber of Commerce mission has not changed, it remains the same. We're focused on education, economic development, and promotion. Those things were important two years ago, and they're still important today. And we are optimistic for 2021. And that is the Chamber of Commerce in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Any questions that I can answer?
I would imagine that the names of the businesses, of the proposed businesses going in, still at a confidential level?
No.
Or if you're able to broadcast that?
The ones over on Railroad Street?
Yeah.
There's a boutique that joined the Chamber of Commerce yesterday, and they're planning on opening and doing ribbon cutting in March. There's the Red Board Tavern. Red Board Tavern. And then there's the Smith Hotel, and there's the bakery. Those are four.
Rail and Ride?
And Rail and Ride's the fifth. And then there's some housing above the buildings that should be coming available soon.
And there are spaces for lease, I've noticed, in one of the newer locations that are opening soon, so.
Oh, that's another business, the one in Rail and Ride, they do lease that commercial space. Can't recall the name of that business, but yeah, so that's six right there on that. So I think that they're looking to market that as the Railroad District, I think is what their, the local merchants are starting to call it.
Okay.
Thank you, Johnny.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number Nine, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Al Peeler, update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Courthouse, County Jail, and the Justice Center. Good morning, Mr. Peeler.
Good morning, Jess, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
This is our two-week before and after.
Hey, you need one?
No, sorry, I don't have one, thank you.
Uh, we'll start with, we'll start with the courthouse.
Ta-da.
Done, yesterday. Last thing I gotta do is pay the last payout and start harassing TAC for our, the our payment for the grant. Hopefully, we can get that before spring. We're still, our engineer has been harassing them for the last two weeks, so we just finally got some information that she's gonna start sending them everything that we need, so that's a $250. We've already been awarded, we've already did the sign, signage for it, we're just waiting for the check, that's what we're doing.
How much is it?
$250,000.
Okay.
Which will all go back to Jesse, because Jesse's already told me she won't give it to the maintenance department. That's good, that's a major thing off my plate. We'll jump right back into it, though. Plans for the courthouse that I budgeted for this year is to finish out the porch, or the stairs, get that repainted and get it re.
The exterior.
The exterior stairs. Then we'll continue with the wall, that's a field effort, but I'm gonna try, because people don't know how to drive around a circle, I guess. So we're gonna have that all redone, get that done, and it should match, and then we'll move on to the grass and get that, because the grass took a pretty good beating during scaffolding and all that construction. So that was some of the things that I did budget for this year. That's what you'll be seeing happening in the incoming months.
Al, help, remind me how long that warranty is on the work that was completed?
Depends on what you're talking.
I mean generally, what?
Generally, workmanship's gonna be a year, and then we have, we have like roofing material, paint, so the manufacturer gives us a ten-year warranty. The roofing is 25 years, and it's just metal, unless we have something that's gonna rip it up. I'll be done and gone by the time that needs to be replaced. So that's good news on the courthouse. If there's any questions, you can ask me about that. Well, moving on. We'll go to the jail. Jail is, jail is the jail. The jail, we have taken over cleaning, my crew has cleaned, we, that takes us literally a day to clean just the admin side. There's more than we thought was there. We've had some issues with sewer, we think we have found our culprit, the lift station that I thought we'd have to replace, we found out that we have some stuff being flushed that makes it to our pumps, and it wraps around our pumps. We found a broken impeller on the pump in the lift station. We were only running on 50%, 50% capacity on one pump, and the other one was totally out. So I'm hoping, we've been in there two weeks now, we have discovered that we have a broken impeller that we don't need. I tried to get a proposal on new pumps, better pumps. We've talked to Haun Equipment out of Houston, they said, "Al, look, I know what you're trying to do, but the pumps that you have are very specific for the lift station." He said, "We can do it this way, we'll just leave new pumps." Our pumps are good, we've checked them out. The impellers, we're gonna put new impellers on, I thought about upgrading the impellers, but the impellers that we have now are just fine, it's just some of the stuff that's getting flushed, we have to address. We have to address that in the jail administration. And that, and that has been addressed, and we're working daily on the.
Is that Davis that's working with you on that?
Yes, sir. We have, our roof, it's doing like it's supposed to, it's not leaking, that's not our problem anymore. Our HVAC, it's doing what it's supposed to, and we can see what it's doing, but now that we can see what it's doing, we save a lot of money when something goes out. We had a run capacitor go out, when a run capacitor goes out, that overheats compressors, and then that means your compressors just blow up. Well, we caught it, turned it off, it cost us $300 instead of 30. So that's the savings a control system did for the jail. We can see what's happening now. That's coming along good, we're just finding breakage in older equipment in HVAC. Humidity's staying well, I'm not gonna say it's good. Again, we got some jail stuff that we're taking care of through the administration, and soon as they give us, as soon as they get their system up and running, that's how the protocols for how they wanna do stuff in the jail, that will help the HVAC. At this time, the only thing I can see on the HVAC that would have, would need to be done is we'll have to do bigger heater, electrical heating, because some are electrical and some are heat pumps. So we're gonna have to address that if, if we get into the spring and it's not able to continue controlling humidity.
Al, are you getting cooperation over there on keeping particular doors closed, because you were having an issue with your controls?
I believe Davis uses, is, is addressing that issue. I just bring it to him, and I mean, that's his department, so I can tell him why the HVAC isn't, and I can pull up trend logs and go, "At this time, this door wasn't open." Or "This door was open, that's why your, that's why your humidity went high." I have the support that he needs to support his administration, and we are getting.
The reason I ask is because Davis is taking care of the jail in that backyard, chief's out in the hallway, and if we need to make him aware from the administrative side, we can certainly do that.
We communicate very well, Judge, and we're, we're not getting any, we're getting all the support we can get right now.
That's all I can ask.
And, and for the sewer system, it's, they're, they're inmates, they get bored, they start flushing stuff, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, if that helps boredom or not, but it doesn't help maintenance at all. So, but I get it, and, and we're just gonna have to address some of the things that we're allowing them to have, and we're going through that now.
Okay, thank you.
Jail standards are very pleased with some things that we're doing. I got a very, I was surprised that we're putting stainless steel showers in our cells, we will be. I got a very pleasant price back, it was about $7,800 for two, which is one single cell and an ADA cell. Anywhere that I checked, we were over $15,000. Oh my God, this is gonna be a 20-year project for me, but we went through TDCJ, they come back, they know what I want, so we'll be proceeding with that. We have got a report, I'm building a report right now for jail standards. We've painted with epoxy paint, we're getting ready to blast the floor and have a company come in and put epoxy down so that we don't have to paint the floors anymore, because they just, again, they get bored and they start peeling. And then I gotta mess again in the drains, and then this. So we're about 60% done with LED lights throughout our jail. That's, that's another granted thing that we, Junior is capable of changing all my lights out for me, so that's a savings. Anything on the jail?
Is it true Commissioner Dobinsky wants that project back?
He can have it. See how quick that was? It's yours. Do we take a vote on that now?
No, this is one of the Justice Center, thank you.
So the Justice Center, you got your two-week look ahead. We're moving right along, the mud is the mud, and it's pretty thick, but we should be getting power. The power pad is, was bored yesterday, so we're hoping that InterG gets on the ball and starts moving so we can get power to the building and get it off our jail, because every time they fire something up, the jail lights blink. We also had furniture requests. That will be in a couple weeks that I bring the furniture stuff to you. I wanna make a statement on that. That is solely your discretion, that has nothing to do with project management, okay? You gotta tell me what route you're going, and then I'll let the architect know, and we'll go from there.
I think we will need you and the two Commissioners on the committee, though, to be in a position to tell us on some of that furniture, that's built-in furniture, so that we don't have any elected officials or department heads saying, "I need this, I need this additional," when it's already built in and it's already covered in the contract. If there's any of that, we, we need to be advised of that, Al.
The built-ins?
What I'm saying is, if we have built-ins that are gonna take care of departments' needs, but they're asking for furniture because they don't know of the built-ins or what have you, we need to make sure that that's screened out.
Every department head knows that every built-in they have, as of last week.
Okay, so the tours covered, the tours you conducted covered that?
The issue would be what they're bringing back versus what won't fit versus, you know, versus a need versus a want, is kind of what we need to make sure we.
Yeah, we were pretty well thorough in this is a building, all you need is a chair. Thursday went very well. I'm gonna hand you this, this is some change orders, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
So we'll have some change orders coming as of our walkthrough. I think there's two there.
And what was that? There you go.
Yes, sir. So I'm gonna start off with the DA's office. So where I have the line, it's green on your copy, is a coffee bar. That is 25 and 3/4 inches. I did some research, and I found, they wanted me to change the cabinet and be able to put a refrigerator in there, in their coffee bar. I did some research, and I've found that anywhere from 30 to 34 inches plus 2 inches off the back wall is what they call for on a refrigerator, that's about 36 inches, give or take. That's gonna hang us 10 inches out into that hallway. That's not good for ADA purposes.
That'd make us non-compliant for the.
Does not. So instead of putting a refrigerator there, my recommendation, and it's just my recommendation, if you go to the private. my recommendation, and it's just my recommendation, if you go to the private secure waiting, which is ten-twenty-five on your drawing, there's a little orange mark. That is where I, uh, propose we put a refrigerator, 'cause the refrigerator is supposed to be used for victims, family of, of crime that is gonna be waiting in there to go testify.
Well, may I ask what the refrigerator's for? Is it, are we refrigerating beverages only?
Uh, we're refrigerating beverages. So I don't miss quote the DA.
The DA said that sometimes they bring their own food and they needed a place for it to be refrigerated.
Oh, okay.
I can read you what she sent me if you'd like.
I would.
Trials are often long-drawn-out days where victims and their families are here late into the evening, particularly when waiting on a jury. We had planned to have a refrigerator in the space to keep snacks and drinks for our, cold for our victims. Victims often bring food with them as well when they have small children or family members with food allergies. The purpose of that area, including the bathroom, was to provide an area where victims could feel safe and comfortable while going through the criminal process. It is also designed to give them the ability to not come in contact with the defendant or their families. Utilizing a break room refrigerator will not work for victims.
And the break room that's referenced there is the one that's, uh, for employees on the, I guess, what, the north?
Northeast corner.
East corner.
Northeast corner, yes. So after doing some research, if they want, I don't think we've messed with the cabinet. The cabinets are already in. They went through design process. They've been approved. Uh, and when I say they've been approved, the Commissioners' Court approved the design, this. When I say approved, it's approved by the architect that that's how the millwork should look. It's not, the design was approved by you folks. Approved for me means a totally different thing than it does the whole design. Um, so for me to stop millwork design or progress right now, that means I have to, they have to come out, re-measure all that. And this would only be able to use like an apartment, uh, apartment-sized refrigerator. I think I found them on, uh, width nineteen inches. They can set it on top of that cabinet. But via her email, it's for the, the victims, so we could put a full-size refrigerator in the private secure waiting and they never have to leave that room. They got their restroom. They got, I mean...
I think it's a good solution.
So that's my solution to that. Uh, on that same, you'll see there's, uh, over in ten-forty-seven, that's the DA lobby. There's a window right beside the doorway, but it's a full slate window. So to talk to the people out in the lobby, they'd have to open the door, take the payment, close the door. So I'm, I, I believe that is a, uh, good change order that we need to do. That needs to be like a pay window. And I'm gonna discuss that with Michael today. Uh, we've also found that in this walkthrough that evidence storage only had one electrical, and that is in ten-thirty-four. So in ten-thirty-five, there's an electrical outlet on the opposite wall and they said, "Well, we don't need that one. We wanna switch it just to this one." Well, the problem is the circuit's routing. If we start switching that, that switches our drawings. That switches the circuits in. So I have talked to, uh, the superintendent with Collier. It would be easier just to run two, uh, circuit with two new, uh, electrical outlets in ten-thirty-four noted on, on your paperwork.
Okay.
By an orange mark.
Makes sense.
So I think when we went through, some people used it as truly what it was designed for is a furniture request and some people just used it to see who got more room than they did. If you want my honest opinion. We also had more change orders, uh, and it's just some of these I don't, I won't bring to you because it's, it, it needs to be done. Uh, the data line in the mailroom, nobody realized that the Pitney Bowes machine needed a data line. So it, it has to have a data drop there. Electrical, for whatever reason, in the county court of law copier area, they got a data line, but they didn't get an electrical line. So, uh, it's just little stuff like that, but to be honest, we didn't take a big hit. I mean, it was, it, it's a very well-built building. You guys can be proud of this. Uh, the DA's secure storage, we're working on that.
Judge Chaney called me this morning. The wood door is acceptable and the lock system can be a key to lock. It does not have to be electronic, so that saves you about five thousand.
Yeah, that saves us a lot. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the JP existing for the pass-through, we, so we, we approved the pass-through window, but they got a window and then they got a pass-through window. What that needs to be is that pass-through window needs to be where the window is. So that's me taking care of that. Uh, and then, of course, you heard about the doors from the judge. We were having a little deal. Did it need to be a metal door? Did it need to be a wood door? And he is taking care of that for me. So as that, that is my, uh, Justice Center report. You will be, we, we are gonna be busy here in the next couple of months. Furniture is gonna be one of, uh, issue, I think, for you guys to make the decision and let me know where we're gonna go that way.
I'm not gonna pick and choose, but I do, I do wanna remind you, if any furniture is ordered, uh, particularly in the line of chairs, they have to be competitive for us to buy. But Ergo here in Navasota is a local company and...
I, I believe, uh, we're meeting with them at ten o'clock Friday?
Ten Friday.
I, I'm sitting down meeting with Johnny and...
Okay. Well, I, when I was talking to Judge, one of the reasons I bring it up, Judge Chaney indicated on occasion he has a back problem. His Waller County Courthouse has been furnished by Ergo and he says that chair is perfect for his needs, so he'd like to duplicate that over here. But my, my point is if they're an economical provider and they can provide what we need and we can consider in-county, I like that idea.
I agree.
Okay.
We're, we are, uh, we have to get the plan together and then I have to bring it to you. We're also gonna have Michael Lloyd come over and tell him, tell you guys, because I wasn't involved in that, okay? So we need the people that were involved in it to tell you what his thoughts were on the furniture line. And then I'll, I'll give you the opportunity with Ergo and maybe I'll find some more people that are about it and then you can go from there. I'm, I'm having, uh, Jessie has let me have... Huh?
Go ahead.
I don't know her name.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. I always call her that, so, um, Jennifer's gonna help me with this. Jessie is allowed to help me with the paperwork and do everything.
Out of the auditor's office. Jennifer, out of the auditor's office, okay?
She's gonna help me break things down and, and so I can present it to you. Me and her will present it.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else on the Justice Center?
Keep plugging along. I'm good. Thank you, Al. I'd ask that you stand by in the hallway or in here, because when we get to Agenda Item thirteen, I'd like to have, um, you available for that discussion, please.
Yes, sir.
We'll now go to, uh, Agenda Item number ten. Todd Green, Grimes County Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy. Consider and take action to allow Grimes County Sheriff's Department to auction decommissioned items and allow the proceeds to be placed in account four fifty-one dash forty-five oh four, forty-five oh five, machinery and equipment to assist with the new fleet purchase, CR attachment number ten. You have quite a lengthy list there, Chief.
Uh, good morning. Yes, this is, uh, reminder, no, this obviously gonna be across there with, uh, we're gonna break our options down to two, just 'cause we're still waiting on some vehicles. So the vast majority of the vehicles will go on the second one. Um, these particular items that we're planning on auctioning right now are, uh, just a lot of stuff that was either recovered or banded on the side road and stuff like that, except for item number one, that's actually a vehicle that, that the county actually purchased and will be used. We're gonna have this on the list, but right now we're in talks with the maintenance department. Um, so we're gonna let them come over and look at and drive around and see if, uh, if it's something they want. Uh, if they, if they want it, we'll transfer it over to them. They, they won't put it on the option list.
Okay.
Um, nobody wants it, then we'll offset it off. I mean, I know there's a couple of issues with it. Um, that's part of the introductions, but, I mean, it might work for them and if it does, great. And we'll, uh, we won't put it on the option and we'll just go ahead and auction the rest of the stuff.
See ya.
Is, hopefully no bidders are watching this live, but is most of this stuff junk or is any of it functional?
Um, I guess, uh, you know, it can be treasured from somebody that asks.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I look at item number two. It's a two thousand and two twenty-foot aluminum boat, motor and trailer. We might not have the need for it or something like that. I'm just wondering if any of our volunteer fire departments that would be mechanically inclined to get something like that and, uh, get it up to speed. John C., I don't know how legal it is or what authority we would have to, uh, something that was on the auction list that donated to an organization such as one of our VFDs or Jessie, if we're allowed to do something like that. I don't know from a legal standpoint, but...
I certainly look at it, but I'm, I'm, it sounds like he's saying that it's something that the VFD may not...
They may have a hold on it.
Wait, what, and that's true, but, uh, okay.
We looked at it, obviously, uh, obviously for floods and for our rescue. The boat is just too big to be used in that kinda...
Oh, okay.
Fashion, uh, as far as making any rescues and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, it, it wasn't running in particular. I mean, you kinda look at it, you're like, mm, kinda nice. And then you wonder why it was left on the side of the road and would have to check down owners and everything and to know about.
Okay.
So, um...
Well, there's no doubt you've done your, your research on getting it on the list. I just...
We've actually been in possession of it for probably those few years, you know, in the county. You know, why it was just abandoned on the side of the road.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the Chief on that?
Most of, most of this stuff is inoperable and no use to the county whatsoever. I mean, it would be considered...
Yeah, and, and some of it is, you know, stuff that was stolen from burglaries that we recovered and the owners aren't coming back and getting it.
Can I ask you to hold it down in the hallway, please? Go ahead.
So, you know, some, some of the stuff we recovered from burglaries and owners aren't coming back and picking it up and after several notices and councilmen haven't picked it up.
If there are no other questions, then I make the motion that we allow the Grimes County Sheriff's Department to auction decommissioned items and allow the proceeds to be placed in account four five one dash four five zero five, machinery and equipment to assist with the new fleet purchase.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item number ten by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Agenda Item number eleven, Harry Walker, Road and Bridge Engineer. Consideration and possible approval of the award of the two thousand and sixteen GLO CBDG Grant Project to Eubanks Excavation LLC and authorize the county judge as signatory, our attachment number eleven. That's a fairly detailed explanation, but they were the low bidder and then they're indeed recommended by the grant writer.
Yes.
Um, we had a very good response to the bid opening. Uh, we had eleven bidders come out. Uh, it's a good business. The engineer's estimate, uh, that we published was one point five-three million dollars, so the low bidder, uh, was well under that, uh, which we will have the opportunity to, to enhance the work a little bit. I'm, I'm real pleased with the bid we received and I was really very happy with it. She was estimating that HGR did, they did a really good job on, on getting the numbers right. Eubank construction, Eubank Excavation was the low bidder in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Mike Eubank is known to us. Uh, they did most of the work at Crown Ranch. Uh, I think y'all are familiar with. So we're happy to recommend that the contract be awarded to them. They will have until next October to complete the project and I think that will be... Any questions?
Is, is this one of the grant projects that I keep getting the letters on, that they're reviewing it?
Yes, yes, it is. Uh, the...
And I put another one in your box yesterday.
Yeah, and that's about this project. The, the GLO likes to complain that we're not spending their money fast enough. How do they have established milestone structure in the building that prevents us from spending money as fast as they want us to? So they don't quite understand their own system.
Okay.
We'll respond to that. We'll continue to get those letters. Uh, it's, we've been warned it's gonna be kinda habitual, uh, beyond these projects and it's just something to deal with.
Gotcha. I get nervous every time I get one of them, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna us missing a deadline or a reporting process, so...
No, we'll, we'll, we'll stay on top of that.
Is that Mr. Eubanks with you?
This is Maureen Barrett with HGR and they were the design consultants and they put together the letter of recommendation and the plans and specs for the project.
Mike Eubanks is a, is a local, uh, business down in the south end of the county, next to the Renizos down there. He's done a lot of work in the county and outside of the county also. Does a lot of work in Harris County, too. Uh, if there are no further questions, I move that we approve the, the award of the two thousand and sixteen GLO CBDG Grant Project to Eubanks Excavation LLC and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item number eleven by Commissioner Dobianski. Second by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Road and Bridge Report was submitted to us in print. So we're good to go. Thank you. Do you, anything you wanna highlight or...
Uh, I, I would like to make a comment. I would like to say thank you all for the great job, our overseeing, the great job that was done on the County Road three twenty-three. I'm getting calls from the citizens and, and they really love and, and are grateful for it.
Thank you.
Now, that, another thing, you know, we did complete the three twenty-three bridge project. We had an interesting time with the big construction the other week. We did, surprisingly, ended up picking up a lot of trees and branches because of the social, um, that, uh, many of the trees just couldn't stand the weight of the snow, which was kinda surprising to me. But, uh, something new, different for us.
Well, thank you again.
Also, I got a, a compliment on the moving of the cattle guard on two tenth. They, they're well pleased with, with the way it turned out. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll go to Agenda... We'll go to agenda item number 12, Talita Coleman, Grimes County Human Resources Director, review and discuss and take action on the county's current COVID leave and absences practices. It is expected the court will conduct a closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code 551.074 Personnel Matters. Talking with Ms. Coleman, she wants to identify a couple of, uh, folks by name, and she feels it's most appropriate that we, uh, do that in executive session, so I'm going to ask that we shut off the, uh, systems. I would... What time did you write down that we wanted to close?
10:12.
I put 11, but that's all right. We're reconvening the commissioners' court. It is 10:25 a.m. We're back in open court. Ms. Talita Coleman, H R Director for Grimes County is at the podium. So we are discussing, we're continuing to discuss agenda item number 12, review and discuss and take action on the county's current COVID leave and absences practices. Ms. Coleman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So commissioners, you had a spreadsheet that I provided the last time I gave you, so I've updated it as of yesterday. It breaks it down by departments, what COVID leave that they've used and how much it's cost the county. I removed the names of the employees for privacy issues.
Is there any department that hadn't been impacted by COVID that's off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of any.
One?
County judge.
Yeah, I haven't counted. Um, yeah, Mary H Johnson had a little bit of COVID leave. Is she? So since the beginning of COVID, we've charged out 6,018 hours, 18.25 hours of COVID leave, whether it's from the individual actually having COVID or just self-quarantining, or a family member had it, taking care of their child when the daycares and schools were closed. And the county's, um, bill for that is 113,023.45 is what we paid since March.
Now, in all fairness, that's not additional monies, that was already budgeted salaries. However, uh, that is salaries paid to potentially no productivity from the employee.
Possibly, because if they're working from home, they don't charge up any of that time they coded from working from home.
Right.
So that would be that they actually were not working.
And, and some, some amount of that is quarantined personnel who had the ability to work from home, is that correct?
I would believe so.
Yeah.
Some amount of the hours that you're giving us today was, was what he said. Some people were working from home?
On this? No.
No, okay, that's what I...
No, sorry.
So I guess the, the issue that we're dealing with, that we're struggling with is, because we do have guidelines from CDC and from the feds of what we were supposed to be doing with our employees that were either exposed or tested positive, uh, and then the question comes up, okay, uh, when does that come to an end or how long does that continue to, how long do we continue cover, covering that under the guidelines that we've been given?
Right, which those, the, the county has been gracious to pay our employees regardless of how many times they're exposed or have to go into quarantine.
Correct.
The Family First Coronavirus Act expired December 31st, which they stated that we had to give them at least two weeks, and then they could go into the FMLA up to an additional weeks for that, for the childcare. We don't seem to have the issue of the childcare right now with the FMLA extension. Um, and then after Commissioner Walker emailed me some information about the new president's, um, possible bill, there is in that packet that I gave you, it says that we could be possibly required to pay up to 14 weeks of paid time off.
As you said, that, that's a bill that has to be passed by Congress.
Yes, that was proposed, but you have one that came out on January 1st.
Well, fifth, but that was...
January 5th from the current administration.
They weren't, that one that I read, Ms. Walker said that we weren't required to pay the additional through March 31st of 2021. Um, it's the court's decision. I'm not wanting anybody to be penalized for getting the virus, that's not what I'm up here for. I just think that our policy that we have, our protocol, is a little too lax, and maybe if we tighten it up a little bit and give our department heads and our elected officials a more definite description on how to handle and what is considered COVID pay and what is not considered COVID pay, is what I'm up here asking for the court. No other county is doing what Grimes County is doing right now. Uh, most of them stopped when the Coronavirus Act expired, uh, December 31st. Some are still paying up to the two weeks if it is an actual exposure, um, but if they're quarantining because a family member got it or they were exposed, um, they're using their own sick.
Sick time, vacation time, holiday time, et cetera.
Well, you're saying the new one that came out January 5th from the current administration, right? You're saying is, it proposes that we don't have to pay?
Yeah, it's on one of those pages that I gave you, it's on the big print page, and then it should be the last page. Counties are no longer mandated to provide paid sick and family leave under the new legislation. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying I don't want our employees to be paid. I, I think if they truly have the coronavirus and are exposed and that causes a work issue or, you know, a health issue for other county employees, you know, that the county continue to give them their two weeks of, um, quarantine time. It's just, when do we draw the line of you're no longer contagious according to CDC, but you're still not feeling well, so we're still going to pay you?
What did we decide the last time this issue was brought up as a court? Didn't...
We left it as, y'all decided to leave it as we have been doing.
Mm-hmm. And that was at, at the end of December?
It was, it was before the end of December, on the 16th, 15th.
And we decided we were just going to continue to pay our employees?
Yeah.
And I think what you're asking for is some more definitive guidance and also the treasurer's office when it comes to payroll. At what point do we say, okay, we're going to let you be covered or be paid on your sick leave until that runs out? Or if you have vacation, you want to utilize that, or holidays banked, you can utilize that, but once that's all gone, then the pay would stop. Correct?
Correct.
Is that correct, treasurer's office?
Did y'all decide 80 hours, was there a set amount of hours or weeks?
Well, under that act that expired December 31st, they, they mandated 80 hours. Which, if you look at that spreadsheet that I gave you, it also gives you the total hours by each department. Each line represents an employee in that department and the hours that they've used. Um, and there are quite a few of our employees who are well over that 80 hours.
So I think one of the things that I heard you mention was if somebody is diagnosed with COVID and they sit there, time out, they're quarantined, and they present a negative test, um, but they continue to be symptomatic with other ailments? You're asking, when do we stop paying the COVID money? And at what point would they then be required to utilize sick, vacation, holiday?
Yes, sir.
Is that what...
And I'd also like to say, um, okay, 80 hours, that's basically two weeks' time. Uh, and originally, the quarantine period was 14 days, and I think from some of the past experiences we've heard about, people have tested positive the 14th day. So then they're, now I'm positive and I need to stay at home for additional time, and I actually have a positive case active. Are you forcing me back to work?
No, no, if, if you're truly positive for it, then you stay at home. But our protocol that we have in place now is if you're exposed, you wait five days, you go get tested. If you present a negative test, then you come back to work.
Correct.
Um, that's what should be done now.
But can I also say that my son's, uh, girlfriend tested three months after the first time she got it, and she still tested positive. So if you're relying upon positive tests, you could be paying folks for a long time. I don't think that's the thing you want to stand on is a positive test. The question is, are you going to develop a bright line test that encourages folks to be safe and says at some point you're going to have to use your own time because this is like another illness? That's the question you're facing. I'm not saying you do or you don't, but that's what you're staring at. And when, if you're not doing that today, is there a time in the future you're going to do it? I think you incentivize people to take steps to be safer. If you say, we're not going to pay you, if you, if you're, you've now been exposed, you're quarantined for 14 days, now you come back to work, now you're being exposed again, now you're going to be quarantined for another 14 days. And on and on, this cycle continues on and on, county's going to continue to pay folks who may not even be sick because of condom. And I, at some point in my mind, I think you have to say, personal accountability, we're going to have to say to you at some point, you're going to have to utilize your own time. I get the sympathetic side of it, that this is a, a unique scenario and very contagious and very bad for, uh, lots of folks, and, and we don't want folks here that are spreading it, but the question then becomes, how much time do the taxpayers pay for? When we're talking about folks, and I think the primary concern is folks who turn out and test a negative.
And, and I think that's where I'm going with the question, because we talked about the 80 hours, but it also talks about up to 12 weeks of pay, so...
That's under the FMLA, they had extended portion of the FMLA to cover for the coronavirus-related illnesses or childcare could be called under the FMLA, and depending on which category it fell in, there was like four different categories, A through D. If they went on the FMLA, which the county has not been putting the employees on any type of FMLA due to COVID coronavirus because we have been paying them.
Correct.
But if we went that route, um, that would allow them, what will expire unless they reenact it, to go on FMLA for Corona-related illnesses or childcare, and then they could either, if they had their full pay, they could use it with their own sick. I don't think it mandated that the county had to pay them that. It was the 80 hours plus they increased the FMLA exemptions. Um, and then they would get two-thirds of their salary if it was like childcare-related.
Yeah, it had, um, one through three, uh, 100%, and then remained two-thirds for the qualifying reasons, four through, and six. So, um, so what I hear, or I think I'm hearing you say, if they have to go out for more than the 80 hours, then they, are you suggesting that they file FMLA?
Well, technically, if they're out more than 72 hours of the same illness, they're supposed to be put on FMLA. But we haven't been doing that because the county's been paying our employees to stay home. So it really depends on the direction of the court. If you guys decide that after the 80 hours, we're not, we're not going to pay you, if you continue to show illnesses, then we will have to put them on FMLA.
Is that your suggestion?
I'm just giving you the options. I don't have a suggestion. I don't have a suggestion on the...
Well, we're looking for solutions, right?
We get to make the suggestion and then vote on it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, I'm looking for my HR director to also direct me, so I'm, I'm asking.
So there's like a question of, do you cap the number of times that someone quarantines, right? If, if you see somebody engaging three, four, or five times, oh, I was exposed again, I'm going to quarantine, and then they're negative, you're paying that every time that happens, you, the county, the taxpayers paying every time that happens. So do you develop a policy that stands on testing? Do you develop a policy that stands on bright line? This is the num, the maximum number we're going to do for any individual? Do you stand in today and say, look, we're not going to do it today, but we're going to put this in place so everybody is aware it's going to come, it's going to be on this date? That's the kind of, I think, guidance that she's looking for.
If you look on that, the spreadsheet that I gave you, you know, it's broken down by categories.
Mm-hmm.
So the line that has the hours under, and don't ask me why it was set this way, this was before my time, but anything that has FMLA childcare code, whether it's salary, hourly or part-time, those are supposed to be the ones who are actually confirmed to have had COVID. The other ones are because they're quarantining, because they had to take care of their child, or they're quarantining because they were exposed. So if you look at that, you can see, um, a lot of our hours were for just quarantining, it's not because of they were actually positive.
Right, right.
So the FM, anything to this side that I see FMLA, uh, in three different columns, so you're, they're all FMLA, right?
Right, the, anything that has FMLA is your hourly, hourly, and your part-time employees who had tested positive.
And then the other is, sick time is just if they quarant...
If they're quarantining or if they were taking care of their child because their child was sick or daycare was closed.
I mean, I'd, I'd agree with the county attorney, I mean, this is a situation that could go on and on and on, and I'm not trying to minimize the seriousness of it at all, but, um, there are other people that get ill and they're, they have to use their sick time and vacation, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do immediately, but I think we probably need to be...
And we do have some employees who have other illnesses who are out right now that, you know, are burning their own time. Um, I'm not saying that we have to do something right now, I just want us to try to jump ahead and get a more established policy in place so we can get some directions, because right now what we have is a suggested protocol, and some department heads and elected officials are just, you know, they're abiding by it, but then they're also just doing, they're winging it. So I think that the county as a whole just needs a more direction on how we're going to go forth with moving with this coronavirus because it's obviously not going away, it's here to stay. Like I said, at one point, do we start treating it like any other illness?
Here's my, here's, here's a possible suggestion, not a, here's a suggestion as a possibility. Commissioners, if you have input on this issue or direction on this issue, feed it to Talita Coleman, Talita, you and I. In the meantime, can formulate a policy that would address the input from the commissioners, and maybe we'll have some guidance also with the new administration coming in. I don't know for sure, but make sure that would be compliant, and if, if we can, then by next commissioners' court, we could present that to the court for their review and possible action of approval. Would that meet with the commissioners?
Yes.
Agreement? That if you have any thoughts or input or issues, feed that to Talita, Talita, if you will, in your spare time, collect that data, but then I'm glad to sit with you based on some of the other conversations and information we've received. Try to put together, uh, as John's term, a bright line, uh, practice and, and policy together, and then we can present it to the court and maybe put this to bed for the time being.
Okay.
Is that agreeable, commissioners, then?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, that doesn't let us off the hook, but it gives us a delay of game for a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the information you presented. All right, we will now go to, um, agenda item number 13. Mr. Peter has returned, okay. I'm going to take the lead on this, discuss and take action to clarify employee practices and use them to justice in business center. Commissioners, here, here's the issue that I think we need to deal with, and we're going to have to set some, uh, protocols, some parameters, some guidelines. I lean on Commissioner Cox, I'll lean on Commissioner Mallett, because they're a part of the building committee, but with my tenure over in the old courthouse that is a historical facility, and I knew, know our justice center is too new to be a historical facility, but because of the historical guidelines, there are a lot of things that we cannot do in that building. We cannot drill holes for hanging pictures, we cannot, um, we cannot at our choosing, oh, I'm going to paint this office brown, uh, they're, they're just, they're things that we cannot do by the guidelines because it is a historical designation. But some of those things that we can't do, I think, are of value, that as we transition over to the new... that as we transition over to the new justice and business center, the question is, are we going to allow the employees that are going to be housed over there at will to start, and I don't want to be crude, but, you know, drilling holes or punching holes or putting nails in to hang up their pictures, their certificates, things of that sort? I do have some things hung in my office, but they are hung off of a crown molding that goes around. So I utilize clear monofin fettlement fishing line. And I am allowed to put a hook on that crown molding. And I am then allowed to hang a picture or a document or something of that that I'd like to, to share with those that might visit my office. What I'm not allowed to do, though, on the back of my door is to tape something up on there or tack something up on there because that violates the historical commission guidelines. The question I pose, or the concern I pose to, to you commissioners is that there's going to be excitement of moving into the new facility. But are we going to, should we put restrictions as to what people can put on their walls? What other personal items might they bring in to the facility? I know the question will come up, and our county attorney, I'll take your guidance on this. You've told us many times that an elected official is an elected official and their boss are the people that elected him and put him in office. And I get that, and it's loud and clear. I don't know who's landlord, okay, of buildings.
You are.
I'm landlord.
Not you, but you collectively.
Collectively with the court.
The facilities belong to the county as a whole, and you dictate what happens with the county facility.
Okay, so I think it's prudent for us as a commissioners' court to, before things start, everybody doing what they want to do, we ought to have some guidelines as to what they can and what they can't do. The other thing that I have a concern with is I know that, I don't care if you're male or female, some people get hot while others are cold. And those that are cold, look at ways of keeping themselves warm, whether they have a heater or electric socks or whatever. But we had a very recent near miss over in one of our buildings with an employee having a personal heater that they had brought from home. And it was plugged in, not directly into a wall, but it's plugged into an extension cord that was plugged into a wall, which violates the, the instructions that come with the heater. So there's no doubt in my mind, even with as much money and the engineering that we're putting in our HPA system, our, our air control system, somebody's going to be cold and somebody's going to be hot. And I, I think we need to, instead of tackling problems one at a time as they pop up, I'd like us to be proactive as a court and try to make some decisions of what's going to be acceptable and what's not going to be acceptable. We're also going to have the issue of, well, the new employee break room is not going to be big enough or it's, it's all the way down the end of the hall. So we're going to need to have our own coffee bar, we're going to have to have our own refrigerator, and our own microwave. And I know I'm one to talk because if you go over into my office area, there's a very small refrigerator, and there is a microwave, and there's a coffee machine in the jury room. All of that is originally there for jurors when they're having jury duty. Now, do I utilize a refrigerator? I must confess, I have an apple inside that refrigerator right now that I'm chilling down and plan to eat it sometime today, and if not today, then tomorrow.
It's not there.
Yeah.
It better be there. The coffee pot that's in the jury room, do we utilize it? Yes, we do. The microwave, I know that was in there. Of course, it's a personal microwave now because the other one was pretty cantankerous. But this one has solar power rays from the sun, according to the staff. But it's also in there in case jurors wanted to heat some of their food if they didn't want to leave the building or so forth. So, I mean, all of us have the potential to justify why we need it, but the question, or why we want it, I guess the question comes up, court, we need to help determine what's going to be needed. We talked about a refrigerator this morning in the DA's area. I think that's an extenuating circumstance because of what they've said about witnesses and crime victims and things of that sort. So I have a clear conscience with saying, not where you want it, Madam DA, but around in the, in the crime victims suite, that's a good place to have that refrigerator. But if HR wants their own refrigerator and their own microwave, do we have an issue with that? So punching holes in walls, bringing in personal appliances, because we do not, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse Murphy, we do not allow people to put in their budgets microwaves and refrigerators and that sort of, and coffee pots and K cups and so forth for their own personal use. We don't spend the citizens' tax dollars in those arenas.
That's right.
Okay. But if we could justify, like what the DA has said, providing that for crime victims and those types of issues, certainly that would be allowable and it's budgetable. Or it's something that we could spend out of the furniture budget that we have for the new justice center. Is that correct?
Serving the citizens, if it has serving the citizens' purpose, then that's fine.
Okay.
That should be, to an extent.
And I'm not going to tell the DA, they can't keep their soda waters in there if that refrigerator is available. But the problem I see is we're going to have a higher concentration of folks in that area. And what are we going to allow and not allow? I can already see the county clerk looking at me like, by golly, we're going to have a refrigerator. Well, maybe we are and maybe we aren't, and that's a decision we, the court, and treasurer's smiling. If you want your paycheck, we better get a microwave. And I'm not trying to be mean or ugly, but I think that we need to make some decisions, put some guidelines out there before we have a problem. I have asked Al and maybe the building committee, Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Cox, I don't know if we have a crown molding in the offices that, in the interior, if that would then allow, and Al's shaking his head, no, we don't.
No, sir.
So I don't know if that is something that should be considered because our employees, when they come to work, they're going to spend more time at work than they are in their personal spaces at home and things of that sort. So if they want some pictures on their desk, or they want their ivy growing, or, you know, I'd like them to be comfortable when they come to work. Roden Bridge is a different situation. But I'm talking about over in the justice center and the courtrooms. Thoughts?
Maybe if you did a survey or something to that sort of each department was mandatory, because there are mandatory things that have to go on the wall, such as your hiring policies and your different policies, and provide them with an area to where if they had to hang something on the wall that is uniform-looking, it looks professional, it's professional hung, you know, that they could have those opportunities, hang some of those things that are required by law that they have to have. But I think just maybe visiting or doing a survey that maybe you could send out to each department, and then the committee could come up with suggestions.
Commissioner, that's, if it's county business, I don't have a problem we can hang it on the wall. That isn't, that isn't my, that isn't what I'm a thing. We have a metal studded building that has 5/8 drywall. So the first time we go to hang Fluffy's little picture over my desk, we got to drill a hole in the wall. And that hole now is bigger than that little tack that you should have hung Fluffy up with. Now, you decide to leave or whatever happens, now you leave, and I got a hole right there in that wall. And the new person coming in doesn't have Fluffy. And she don't like, she or he doesn't like that hole. That's an expense to Grimes County taxpayers for me now to go back and fix that hole and that hole and that hole and that hole because Fluffy had brothers and sisters.
Well...
That's the problem.
Okay, I understand the problem. I was making a suggestion for a solution to how we can compensate. I mean, when we moved in over at Grimes, the new building over there, Judge Shiflett had basically a set of rules in place that she would like, you know, for the building. So what I'm saying is, yeah, there are some personal things that maybe shouldn't go on the wall, but there are also some mandatory things that have, that are required. Or even providing spaces like cork boards or whiteboards that the department may need. But at least get a survey or a, an idea of what each department might want. And then you can come up with some suggestions as to what is allowed. Just like you said, well, I'll go work on a policy, a building policy, so...
Who's doing the survey?
It, I don't know. It would be easy just to send out a county-wide email and ask the question.
Well, I think the question is, are we going to allow personal items to be hung on the wall? Any county item, from what I understand, or any required item legally, some of them have to be hung, so we can't get around that.
Same thing in the court. We have that, we have the same thing in the court.
Actually, limited to the way things are installed and maybe the number, but it really doesn't matter whether or not it's Fluffy or it's a notice for an employer. It's the, how many things in an office and how are they put up? That's the real issue.
That's just what I, I didn't get that it was just a personal item stuff at first. I just got...
Is that how you want it?
No things on the wall or whatever.
If, my suggestion, I don't, I don't care what we do.
Yeah, you do, but go ahead.
I mean, no, I don't care how we, what we hang. That, I have no business in that.
Your concern is how do we hang it?
How do we hang it? Do we, if you guys decide we want pictures in the office, I'm good with that. But it's the step of how we're going to do it. With 3M, them, the only thing bad about them, and I've tested it, after a time, they rip the paper off the drywall. That's easier to deal with than there is 1,000 holes in the wall. So that's, I'm not here to say I don't want Fluffy hanging on the wall because sometimes I walk into their office and it's good to see a little baby smiling once in a while. You know, it's just how we're going to do it. That's, that's my concern.
I think that's a fair concern. And along with that concern is how much allowance are we going to allow for elected officials and department heads that are going to be residents over there to bring in? I don't, I think the edict ought to be, and I talked to TAC, and there's not a policy that goes out to counties that you cannot bring in personal heaters. But if you do bring in the personal heaters, what he told me was, and it needs to be 36 inches from this and 36 inches from that, and it has to have an upward clearance of 36 inches. And I can, for the most part, unless you put that heater in the center of an office suite, it's not going to be 36-inch compliant with all of the restrictions that go along with that. But I can assure you, somebody's feet are going to be cold or their legs are going to be cold, and they're going to want to bring that heater in, put it under their desk. And it would be all fine and great if they would never catch on fire or blow circuits or what have you. But we went from a very high-cost repair situation. Fortunately, the heater blew out, and when I say blew out, it blew out. And I think we only lost a computer. And we could have lost an entire circuitry and a door system, which was bouncing around $80,000 to $100,000 to replace. So not only are we looking at safety of the facility and our employees, but we're looking at the cost that could potentially be incurred to our taxpayers. And as a court, now's the time for us to have this conversation, in my opinion.
So let's, go ahead, Commissioner.
I mean, I might comment on the personal heaters. Back whenever we were across, adult probation was across the street, TAC came through and that building was rather drafty. It just happened to be a cooler day, and most of the people in the office had a space heater in their office. And TAC said you have to tell them to turn those heaters off, A, for the reasons that you've enumerated, but also because you're doing more harm to your HVAC system, your heating system, because it can't properly heat and cool the building. It's constantly struggling. And I think we've had huge issues, control issues and other discussions in this, this very discussion about the building, so...
That's why I asked the question this morning about the jail. Is Davis able to, you know, keep the doors shut? So Commissioner Cox, you're exactly right. There are multiple problems that go along with it.
And that, and that's my point. It's not that I don't want it to be warm or cold. But if you put a heater in there, and I'm trying to fight humidity in the new building, the only thing it says, it registers humidity. While they got the heat on, I'm sending more heat in. Or if it gets to the level that it says, okay, now I need to send the air conditioning on. While you got your heater, I'm running your air conditioning. It doesn't make any sense to me on county money, if I, if you're trying to heat, he or she is cold, and I, and it's telling the sensor, hey, it's too hot in here, throw, throw air conditioning in. We're just wasting, and we're, and we're putting demand on our systems and our control systems.
Judge, can I make a suggestion? I mean, it's clearly, this is Al's baby, the building is. And he'll be intimately aware of the issues that you're talking about. It just seems to me that either a committee of the court with Al or Al with the assistance of Pink Al or other counties, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, I don't think, here. It just has to have been addressed many times. Maybe that's the way to handle it, because I think all of you are going to have good ideas about things that need to be addressed and things that need to be regulated. But it's, it's going to be a long list.
You just want to get it done so I can get my apple.
I can just see that this is going to be, each person has another idea, and we're never going to get to the policy that then you're going to go, okay, Al, do a, I do a policy.
Well, we, I, we've already got two commissioners dedicated to the building committee. I think this is a part of it with the two of you being, it's not a fun task, but would y'all work with Al on putting together a recommendation of how we ought to handle it? I got one yet? Commissioner Cox?
Sure.
And then whatever you decide on, you can say, Al said, and that'll take the heater off of you. All right. Thank you, Al.
This guy.
With that, did you make those notations, Vanessa?
I'm doing it right now.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to, item, agenda item number 14, review and discuss and take action to determine a replacement for the position of Grimes County Treasurer. The sadness over that agenda item is apparent throughout the county. And Jim Bob Trant was buried Monday. It's not as expected to be back in this situation so soon, not here or not anywhere in the county. But because the treasurer's position is a countywide position, it is up to us commissioners' court to find someone to fill that position and to appoint them to complete the almost two years left on the current term. And then whoever we appoint would have the option of running for that office. And if that's the case, if they so desire to do that, they would then need to sign up in somewhere the October, November timeframe of this year, when that takes place, for them to then be on the primary ballot, which will take place in March of 2022, and carry over to the general election in November of '22. And then they would take office for... And then they would take office for a four-year term, starting January the 1st of 2023. But our obligation today is to have a little bit of discussion on the process, but again, the decision is going to be up to Commissioners' Court to appoint a replacement. I will tell you that as we sit here today, is it two internals? I've gotten paperwork from two internal employees, and I've gotten paperwork from one to, to external people that are interested in the position. So the last time around, there was not a lot of input of people wanting that position. This time, there seems to be a little bit more interest in, in that position. So we, as a court, we can interview, our protocol or our procedure is we post it internally, and that time period has come and gone, has it not, Toledo?
Right. So we hit the 72 hours this morning for it to be posted internally. We've never done this before with an elected position, so it's kind of uncharted territory. So we treated it just like we had any other vacancies in the county, because there was some internal interest. So I posted the position internally for internal employees to send in their resume and application, which we did receive too. So typically, what normally happens is that the court would interview the two candidates that they have internally. If you decide that neither one of those are fit for your liking, or what's best interest of the county, then you would open it up, I would run an ad in the paper, requesting people to submit their applications and resumes, and then you would interview externally.
But it would be my recommendation that we do interview the two internal candidates that have exhibited desire to be considered for that position, and then if for some reason one of those two did not fit our need, fill that position, then we ought to go to the expense of advertising it, holding the two externals that I've received, and then go through the interview process in that respect. You have a wrinkled brow, Commissioner Cox.
Yeah, I just think, it's not that, I mean, I, I know in the past, it's been opened up to anybody that wanted to participate, and there was a deadline date for getting the information in if you wanted to be considered. I wouldn't be opposed to doing that this time. I'm certainly not opposed to interviewing the internal candidates, but I don't necessarily know that we separate them out from anybody else. I think, you know, you just take the lot as it comes and interview everybody.
I agree with Commissioner Cox. I think, you know, it's, it's, it is a county-wide position, elected position, it should be open for everyone, you know, immediately, not necessarily internal versus external people.
So then the next question is, do you want to let HR place an ad, and you run that ad, and then wait till you get those in before?
When we run an ad, we typically run it for two weeks. That's what's in our policy.
Right.
There is a, there is a, there is an urgency to get it filled, but there's not, if that makes sense. Like, it puts a lot of work on your existing staff.
Staff, right.
Not having an actual treasurer in there, and it's, that office has already been stressed out so much in the last six months. I don't by any means want the Commissioners' Court to make a rash decision on who they put in there. But if we post it in the paper, it needs to run for at least two weeks, so that's another two weeks.
And that's not.
And you've got to interview, so you're looking four to six weeks before you can even come to a decision on who you're going to put in that office.
Does it, is it mandatory that it has to run two weeks?
That's what our policy says.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is necessarily like a typical employee, because it's a
elected position. I think the news is around that we have a vacancy. I think if we went ahead and applied for, you know, do, you know, one advertisement just to make sure someone that didn't know, and gather after that maybe one week period, and then get some together and actually meet.
So it won't run until next week?
That's correct. Excellent.
Can we give a little time after that to anybody that wants to apply, and then actually set up those interviews for next, maybe that following week or so?
Well, we already have four that have applied. We could even start interviewing those next, the possibility of next week.
I did have somebody email me, and I forwarded that email to the HR department, and I've also had somebody call me that expressed interest. I don't know if they applied, but.
No, I've got a, after I was waiting for today to see how you all were going to decide, and I'll reach out to the one that you forwarded me. And then I was emailed this morning, I think, I think they might have talked to you or emailed you, Judge, but I'm waiting to respond back to him on the direction of the court. So you guys tell me what y'all want to do. I, like you said, everybody's aware that we have the vacancy. In the past, the people who were interested, we never posted an elected position, whether it been Commissioners' Court or a JP in the paper, to my knowledge. The citizens who were interested in filling that term always reached out to a member of the court. And those are the ones that you all would consider. So for time's sake, I would say not run it in the paper, and just reach out to the ones who've already shown interest, because my theory is, is that if you put it in the paper, there's a lot of people that are out of work right now. They might just throw their name in a hat to see, and not really realizing what type of tasks they're asking to take on. And you will have a lot of people who can interview well. That doesn't mean they can necessarily do the job. So that would be my suggestion on that part, is that you just let me reach out to the ones that have already showed interest. And then you guys pick a couple of dates next week that you're willing to, to interview, and we can get those set up that way.
I agree with that.
I agree with Al.
Yep. Is there a consensus? Yes. All right. I don't think we need to vote on that. We got a consensus. All right, so if you have received contact from those outside people, then let them know that we'll be setting up interviews, and we'll, we'll look at the schedules and see what's available, what's not available, and start that interview process sooner than later.
Judge, can I make one more clarification comment?
Sure.
I received, I received that email. It's not somebody that I know. I'm not endorsing anybody.
Sure.
I guess they just got my name.
Is the one he got the same one I got?
Yeah, I think they reached, I think that person might have reached out to more than one, because it's the same.
Okay. And I don't remember either, Commissioner, but I.
And a phone call. Well, a couple of phone calls.
And you get me the contact information, I'll reach out to them once you guys pick the dates. I'm not going to contact any of them until you guys give me some dates, in a way I can give them all the information upfront.
Well, when you say you're going to reach out, I think they have a response, I mean, if somebody's contacted you.
They sent a resume.
Then my belief is, you, you need to instruct them to contact Human Resources. If they contact you, then we can further the process on the interview, but that's what I've told my contacts, and I think that's the way we ought, everything needs to be filtered through you, Toledo. Okay?
So if y'all get me, if y'all have any responses, you'll.
Should I tell them?
Turn them over to me.
How about the timeline? What I hear, you're asking also for a timeline.
Yes, I really don't want to start calling the people and say, hey, we decided, you know, the Commissioners' Court agreed, we're going to go ahead and open this up, go ahead and send your application and resume, and then I'm going to have to call you back at a later date to give you a time of when we're going to interview. And then you need to think, if you get 15 applicants, are y'all going to interview all 15 applicants, or do you want to go through the applications and see who's truly qualified?
Screen them.
So.
Why don't we say a week from today, open, you know, for receiving them?
Commissioner, I would think, call it a deadline of 5:00 on Monday, if they haven't had to buy a close of business on Monday, because we've already, it's already been in the paper twice, or I think it's in the paper again today. So people do have that awareness. If somebody's interested, then they got the balance this week, and if they didn't hear about it till the weekend, then they've got through Monday. But I agree with Toledo, and the Treasurer's Office.
That was just a suggestion.
No, I, no, I appreciate it, but we need, we need to move on this as quickly as possible to help spread that workload.
I'm good with Monday, if that's.
Does that agree? Okay. So cut off at 5:00 on Monday. If anybody calls on Tuesday, I'm sorry, we're not taking any more applications at this time.
And then.
If we didn't have a viable candidate, which I doubt, then we could go back out to ads and so forth.
Okay, and then y'all going to give me the dates that you're going to potentially do the interviews?
Cherie, do you know what Wednesday looks like next week?
Perfect.
Perfect for what?
For anything we want to do.
Okay.
So we're going to do Wednesday.
What is Wednesday's date?
All day, it's the 27th, and courtroom's open all day long. You're good.
Starting at 9:00?
Yeah. I would say at 9:00, but I would, I wouldn't rush them. I'd give 45 minutes a person. When we do the 30 minutes.
Every hour on like 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, break for lunch, 12:00.
The 27th?
Yes, sir.
Get a cog, C-Jack, need.
Yeah, that's what I was.
What time?
From 10:30, well, starts at 10:30.
Is it? Well, we can start them at 12:30, 12:30, 1:30, 2:30, 3:30, and if we need to.
If you needed additional time and you went to Thursday, I have a meeting Thursday morning.
Let's just keep going Thursday evening, 4:30, 5:30. Well, let's start with that, and we'll see how many are strongly interested in being interviewed, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right. There's nothing further than on Agenda Item Number 14. Agenda Item 15, considering take action regarding the burn ban on authorized County Judge's signatory. No action I'd suggest. No comments, moving on. Any updates on the strategic plan? With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 17. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Dobieinsky to adjourn, second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Readjourn.